...in your office in the audience, excuse me, is doing so, please, according to it. Thank you. No lady? Okay, we'll go to meeting minutes. Mr. Gagner?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of November tenth, two thousand and fifteen, as written.
I'll second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All right.
Aye.
All business. Mr. Gagner, do you have any old business?
I do. Actually, the Sessions Action Committee had requested, thank you, a copy of all town-owned properties. I do have that copy. I have reached out to Ms. Mundell, and I have reached out also to Mr. Lavash to have them let me know where to get that to you.
Okay. That it?
Yep.
I got a couple of things. We recently released the RFP for the street lighting, so I brought a copy in to give to Becky tonight, the copy of the RFP that was put out Monday. The due date back is the thirty-first of December. It's us and five other communities, so this is the procurement process for the street lighting purchase, so I brought a copy in to share with the office, so we have it for our records. Also, I did receive a few emails, if anybody's noticed. The donation boxes down on Main Street have been removed. You know, it's unfortunate that they're kind of used as a dumping ground, but I've had three calls and a couple of emails, and people thanking us for having them removed, so they're not collecting old mattresses and whatnot, or them being a hazard. So, they have been removed, and it seems that the residents in the area are pretty happy that that's taken place. And also, one thing that was brought up last week regarding the highway vehicle inspections, we received the documents, we have them in the office, and Mr. Trudeau did bring those in, and the cost to repair was twenty-two dollars for all of the documents, which we do have them in our office. So, if you're interested, we can take care of it after the meeting's over, if you'd like. But there's a cost for the copies, so I was just saying, we did receive them, we have them in the office, so we can take care of that later on.
Well, when you make copies, and I'll pay you for the copies.
Yep. So, I'm gonna, yeah, so, too bad. That is all I have, all business. I'm sorry, Mr. Lavash, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
No. Uh, go on, see?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to discuss the email addresses and the website a little bit more in detail.
Okay. Yes, we do have townwide email now. If you've actually had a chance to go on the town website, under the contact page, you'll see a listing of all, pretty much all employees right now who have a townwide, a town email address. We've made some adjustments on the website, we've moved all, some minor, I guess, facelifts you could call it, but there's about seventy, I think there's seventy-three email accounts town. So, we're trying to make it easier for people to access the department heads and employees directly through email, a little bit more secure for the town as a whole when it comes to records requests and that. So, the conversion is pretty much complete. There's a few things we have left to do, but we're pretty happy with that. We're gonna be going through and doing some website updates in the future, because, like I said, that is our business card, and it is an avenue for people to locate us. So, it's been a lot of work. Becky has done a lot with that, and I appreciate her help coming in on Fridays and helping to administer that, but is there anything you'd like to add, Becky?
Yeah, just one of the things, actually, about the website, that, you know, there's seems to be some frustration about, or the lack of information that's on it, but, you know, I can't put anything up unless it's given to me. So, all these other boards and departments and committees really need to get on board and start forwarding some information, so we can get that up and keep everybody informed as to what's going on. It's up to everybody to police their own page, I'm not babysitting anybody, if, you know, their terms are ex-
Good way of putting it, I guess.
The terms are ex- you know, I'm not gonna police this.
We're trying to come up with a form that everybody can use, so if they need to make a change to their page on the website, it can get facilitated a little quicker, because that seems to be the biggest complaint, and a lot of these boards and committees and departments, their information's just outdated. So, we have a form, we haven't really released it yet, but we're gonna put it out to all the department heads, so that they can keep their information up to date, and put minutes in that to it. But unless that stuff gets facilitated or transferred down to Becky, you know, we can't just call them up and say, hey, you have to do this, you have to do that. So, they have to take some ownership for their page on the website.
Are they aware of that?
Well, we have, they are aware of it, but we're gonna send out more information when we have the form to be released, so. Ben?
Yep, I just want to verify that from last week.
All right, comments and concerns? Yes, Becky, I'm sorry.
Last week, I made a request for the Friends of the Town Hall to use the foyer for handing out tree ornaments during the tree lighting ceremony.
So, I understand your, I understand your request, but I have a concern, because it is the police department, and it is secured, the first floor should be secured, and we're gonna have the public in there. I don't think we can open it up like that at this time, because there's only the one door, once you enter into the foyer, there before you're actually into the police department. And I do have some concerns personally myself, speaking for myself, that if we have a criminal or somebody who's in custody inside the building, we're allowing the public to come into that side of the building, you know, the building's purpose is the police department. I know we want to convert this into a town hall again and utilize it for that purpose, but it's difficult to allow that to happen when that really has to be locked up and closed up. It's just not, the whole first floor is pretty much theirs, I mean-
So, are you telling me that that door to the police department is not locked?
Well, it is, but I'm saying, what if something comes through there? What if something happens inside of, on the other side of that door, where people are on this side of the door? I don't know if we want that liability, or we want the people, the public to be in-
But the door would be locked.
You can still go through the door. It's not like the door, that blue door, that was the blue door, Frank, Mr. Lavash, the one that's got the plastic on it?
Yeah.
The one that has the plastic-
They're not the strongest of doors, I guess. It's not a door that, it's not a steel door.
Excuse me, it's just a turnabout. If somebody got loose on the inside, they'd just turn and open the door.
I don't think it's secured enough to allow the public to be on the other side of that door.
Why wouldn't they secure it?
I think we need a better door. It's locked, but we know that nobody's on the other side of that door. We know nobody's inside there, so it really hasn't been an issue to really change that door or secure it, so that the front can be opened to the public. We'd have to change the door. It's just a, it's a flimsy door.
Okay, so, the issue is the door, and it is not the trash that is still on the first floor in the foyer? That was there since June, like the tires and-
Well, I, it's been a catch-all. I do agree with that.
So, yes or no, is that probably the reason why we can't use it?
Because the trash is there? No. I've, no, I personally, I don't think so. I mean, I think it's because of the door. I just have a concern about the door and the lack of security, and that it's just not a secure door leading into the police department right there.
Are there any plans to replace that door in the very near future? Without that, then you're saying, even if we fix everything up in the town hall, we don't, we can't use it, because it's a bad door. It's a flimsy door, someone could come in.
It can be part of what we're trying to accomplish, and, but right now, I think the funds that we've allocated are, we have concerns about the basement, again, ventilation-
It's a closed building, nobody is supposed to be in that building, because the start with the building is not accessible, so you're not gonna open that town up, that town building up until you get accessibility in there, to all who's.
Who said that?
Excuse me?
Who said that?
I mean, who?
Who said that? The ADA.
The who?
The American Disabilities Association.
So, that applies to the library and all the other buildings in town.
Once you start making major changes inside, you have to bring up ADA compliance.
And this one too, this building-
This building too, it's just a similar case with the elevator. You can't just add the elevator without changing other, becoming ADA compliant everywhere throughout the building, once you start to do those things.
Well, I would think the police department, for their safety, they should, it's their responsibility to pay for that door.
Okay.
It's gotta be its budget.
Well, he has a maintenance line item, and it could become part of his budget to change the door. I just, you know, with the problems we've had-
Just put a big lock on the door. The lock on the door hasn't been a problem.
A bigger lock, if the door is not secure, the flimsy door, a bigger lock does not solve the problem.
I mean, I think we're all agreed that the town hall needs a lot of work in a lot of different areas. We're trying to accomplish what we can with what little funds we allocate towards it at the time, so where do we wanna purpose the money? I agree with town hall, you know, if we're gonna maintain it and keep it and make a change to it, I think the police department needs the monitor, it's the only way for it to come a town hall again. Right now, it's pretty much a police department, that's what it is.
The building is also registered historically, so any door you put on there is gonna be historically correct.
That's not true, because you put the, you put the door going into the police department, that's not a historical door.
It's just, when they repair that building, it's supposed to be historically correct.
Well, it isn't.
The door, the door might have been put in before it got registered, I don't know.
Oh, well, the new door that you're gonna be putting in there, is that gonna be a historical door?
It will have to be.
It would have to be.
It would have to be, if we make a change. I'll talk to Bruce about that. I'll call him tomorrow.
I mean, we're trying to find uses for that town hall, and all we do is get pushed out.
I understand that, and I also have a concern with the problems we have with mold too, and the ventilation in the building. I mean, it's, you know, we're gonna start letting the public go into a building that still has circulation conditions. There's still a lot going on there, that I don't know if we really wanna have the public traveling into a building that has health concerns, or potential health concerns, I mean, there's-
Potential, no.
Potential.
You can't say it's a health concern, and I think that's just a cop-out, to keep everybody out, and we'll never get that restored if those are the kind of roadblocks we keep getting. It doesn't seem like you people are trying to work with anyone to get that for more use. Town people wanna use that for various things, but every time they ask, they're shot down. Flimsy door, or this potential mold, or this potential bad circulation in there, it's always something. It's like, let's move forward here, let's try to get some things going. We've had it all inspected, they said this, there's nothing wrong, there's no pollution in there, and that type thing. Let's go forward, let's not keep going back.
The only thing I can comment on that in regards to that is the amount of money it's gonna take to do it, we need to really, I mean, we have to allocate a lot of-
Making it accessible, you're talking elevator to get up to the second floor, and the third floor is the, the biggest problem, is there's a floor between upstairs and downstairs in the back, there's rooms in the back, and they often make it all accessible, or you can't use the door. And that's ADA law, that's not-
Yeah, at some point, at some point, it doesn't have to be done right now for us, that some kind of activity's in there.
Well, no, because if we have activities in there, and people in the wheelchair can't get in yet, if you people, if they have anything going on in the foyer, and somebody in the wheelchair wants to get in there, and they can't get in there, it's against the law.
They can't get in here either. Well, then what about the library? That's not handicap accessible, how do people get in there? How about here?
I would say the library's grandfathered, because it's been there for such a period of time. Any changes that we, that were to be made to it now, at this point, it would have to be right up to compliance, but because it's the age of the building, it's grandfathered in. I can only speak from experience on that, and where I worked, that we have an issue with it right now. The minute we do something with the school, we move the children out of there, the building's shut down, we have to bring it up to ADA compliance, a hundred percent. Same thing gonna happen if we move the police department out. We wouldn't be able to put anybody in there until we ride up to ADA compliance, the minute they left, so. Anything any wrong with the purpose of it, because there's just, it's just a lot of money we'd have to purpose it at home. And we put fifteen thousand dollars at the town meeting towards it for everything, you know, we're trying to find funds to do these things, it's just, it's costly, a lot of money.
Well, if it was done-
Years ago.
Only years.
But, you know, and I'm not gonna try to cut this one off, because it's past the five minutes, but we've been trying to put whatever money, any funds we can towards it, it's just, nobody seems to think it's enough, because it's fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand. I think Madeline in committee, and committee Mr. Lavash is on, has done a pretty good job with the limited funds that they've had so far to get it where it needs to be. So, it's not that people aren't working on it, it's just, there doesn't have the money to do it.
What about the down spell?
That's you, Mr. Lavash, I'm sorry.
I have to call Mr. Speller, I don't know, I know he was down there with the ladder, and he said that hanging on the ladder is too steep, so he's gotta bring the truck down. Well, he was down there yesterday, and I don't know.
I mean, it's been months.
Funds are there for it, and we're trying to get the contractor in to get this done, so. Miss Speller, Rose?
How are you?
How are you? Nice to see you this evening.
In January of this past year, I came before this board, and I questioned why we were paying a Warren Police Officer to stay at home. Fifteen months we've been paying this gentleman to stay at home. It equates to over a hundred thousand dollars salary taxes, Benny's rolled up into one, and as far as I am aware, he has made one court appearance on behalf of the Warren Police Department. So, I'm really quite confused why this is going on. It seems to be a little bit egregious that we seem to be paying that kind of money. And secondly, in thirty-seven days, we're supposed to be either renewing a contract for a police chief or moving on. And Advisory fourteen-ten of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Ethics Commission, a public document going over public employees' private business relationships and private dealings with those of whom they have official authority, which is on General Ledger, Chapter two-sixty-eight A, Section twenty-three, talks about what could be considered ethical issues for public officials. Since two people on the board have had instances where there have been altercations with private citizens, taxpayers, and the chief was involved in both of those, it would seem that I'm questioning if the town council has been made aware of this, and if there's a question of ethics there, whether they would be involved with the contract negotiations or the decision to renew that contract. And if that hasn't been discussed with town council, especially after reading exact Advisory fourteen-one, which was, which came down over a case of county sheriff last year, it would seem that it may be prudent that the town contact town council to make sure that this will not be an ethical problem for the town in the future.
Okay. To answer the first question, I can't comment on that matter, but I can tell you that there is closure coming to that matter, so, but I can't comment any further regarding an individual. Number two, I can look into that. I am not aware if we've ever contacted council regarding that, I don't believe so in my year and a half on this board, but it is something that could happen. Would we involve council in the contract negotiations for our chief? They can, they can form an opinion and give it to us, but I think that that's gonna reside solely with this board when we renegotiate the contract.
Maybe I, maybe, maybe I didn't state my, maybe I didn't state my question correctly. My question is, I believe town council should, it should be discussed with town council, who makes that decision? As two people on the board did have altercations with taxpayers, and our chief was involved in those investigations, one could say that there could be some issue with Chapter two-sixty-eight A twenty-three, so I would assume town council would wanna know those things before, you know, there was negotiations, or even a discussion whether they were gonna renew the contract, because, again, it could be conflict of interest.
And you are correct about thirty-seven days.
Yes.
I will reach out to council, probably not till Monday, regarding that, you know, we have it in the minutes, I took a couple notes on that. I'll contact them myself and ask the question, and get you an answer on that, to find out where we do stand, and if there is a problem with that moving forward, so I'll make the phone call next week after the holiday.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or concerns? Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Stan.
I have questions concerning the K nine situation. Do you want me to wait till the hour comes up, or you want me to just do it now?
We're actually tabling that tonight.
I was gonna request you to do that, and I have reasons.
Okay, well, just, we're not there, but when we get to that, we're gonna be tabling it, I'll explain why when we get to that, to that portion, okay? Yes?
I have a question regarding if we aren't allowed in the town hall, can we set up on the portico steps, two Christmas trees and some lights, and use that as an area to hand out our ornaments?
Because no one would have to come up-
That's not letting them in the building, but it's still the same problem, you get up on the steps, I don't know.
I can run an ornament down to somebody in a wheelchair, I mean, we could make a combination there to give them anything to see.
If running comes down to buy whatever you're selling, and you're sitting up on the stairs, how does it get up there to do it?
I can run one down, but we're not selling them, just giving them off.
We're not selling them.
Let me check with Bruce, I'll call the chief for a moment, I don't think that, I'll call the chief for a moment, I don't think that'll be a problem on the steps personally, I mean, Mr. Lavash makes a good point regarding, you know, the handicap accessibility, you know, I don't think it's a problem being outside on the steps, but let me just talk with the chief on that, the building it is, and we'll let you know.
Yeah, would he allow us to run an electric cord out, so we plug in our trees?
Yeah, if you plug it up on the steps, we could, we could run up the doors.
We can do it for him, yeah.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll call Bruce, you got that, Becky?
Do you think you'll be able to get back to us tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a backup plan, if we're not, we're gonna share the library space, so.
Okay.
Who do you want me to contact?
Okay, tomorrow.
Trace Lee, go to Danger Zone, they will just do it there.
Okay. We'll go with correspondence, I guess, we're good?
Mr. Gagner? The office received notification of the certificate of completion for James M. Keon for the two thousand and fifteen Effective Leadership During Crisis Conference that was recently held at the DCU Center in Worcester.
Excellent, I think you did comment on that last night.
The office received an open meeting law complaint involving Select Board Chairman Dario Nardi and Select Board Clerk James Gagner. The complaint was filed by Vice Chairman Lavash requesting to nullify all actions resulting from the vote to realign the board and return the board to its original position.
So, I did receive the complaint, we, our office did, on the twelfth of November. We had fourteen business days to respond, so I did prepare a response, sent a certified mail to Mr. Lavash's residence, sent a copy to Attorney General's office, and the copy's in our office also, so we did respond to it within the time, and we'll wait to see what the Attorney General has to say from the complaint.
Notification from the Quabog Regional School Committee that they voted to authorize the borrowing of forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-seventy-five dollars for the Warren Community Elementary School Energy Saving Lighting Project.
So, this is something actually that the super, the business manager, this is Lamiket contacted me on prior to our town meeting, because they were actually looking to see if they could put an article forward to borrow for that. It's similar to what we've done with our lighting, but in order for them to convert their lighting, they have to actually change their appliances and fixtures. So, the fifty thousand dollars to borrow is to change the fixtures themselves, so that they can receive the lighting for free to put in there. So, it is, it is a good thing for the school, I think they borrowed fifty thousand dollars, it's at zero percent for five, five years, it's a zero percent loan, they're borrowing the money, the payback on it's gonna be similar to what we're gonna receive on the LED streetlight conversion, so we couldn't put it on the fall, especially because of time, but they were able to authorize the borrowing as a school committee, you know, the other evening, so, you know, I hope it works out for them, and, you know, save money on energy down the road.
Do you know how much of a savings it will be for you?
I don't know personally, it averages twenty-five to thirty-five percent the first year. You have maintenance involved, so you get a factor into maintenance costs to maintain after a certain amount of time, but, you know, our maintenance, our, our savings on the streetlights is tremendous, so, I, it's a little bit different for interior lighting, I just don't know the exact number, so it's at least twenty-five percent on their energy, so.
Mr. Gagner? Notification from the Sewer Department, that they will be accepting applications for its wastewater treatment plant operator slash mechanic position. The job description and applications are available at the wastewater treatment plant at twenty-five, twenty-seven Main Street in West Warren, and on the town's website at
Yeah, I know.
But I would get it. The town clerk's office has announced the Holiday for Heroes program beginning Monday, November thirtieth, through Thursday, December tenth. The office will be collecting items to fill holiday boxes for those who are in the military in the States and overseas. Please contact the clerk's office for more details.
Excellent, that's excellent cause. Nancy does it every year, I believe, right? Yes. Thank you, Nancy, for that.
I imagine that she has a list of different items at the clerk's office that she would write, but take your things.
Is that just at her office, or is it on the website?
I think it's on the website.
On the website, too.
Yeah, cool. Excellent. All right, and we are tabling number six, correct, Becky? Okay, well, we're gonna go to number seven, Proclamation, Town of Warren, Purple Heart Towns.
Yep, Town of Warren, Proclamation, Purple Heart Town. Whereas, the people of the Town of Warren have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country, and this community, and the armed forces for the good of all, and whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Warren who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas citizens of the community have been killed in action while serving in the armed forces, and have been posthumously awarded the Purple Heart for their ultimate sacrifice, and whereas citizens of our community have been awarded the Purple Heart for their bodily sacrifice of being wounded in action while engaged in combat, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use, and was created as the Badge of Military Merit on August seventh, eighteen, I'm sorry, seventeen eighty-two, in Newburgh, New York, by General George Washington. Initially, it was made of purple cloth, shaped as a heart, with the word merit sewn upon it, and whereas the heritage it represents is sacred to those who know the price paid to wear the Purple Heart, and whereas August seventh is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day, and now, therefore, it, I'm sorry, be it proclaimed, we, the Warren Board, Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Warren, go on record, we hereby proclaim Warren, Massachusetts, as Purple Heart Town, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform that were wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Also, be it proclaimed, we, the Town of Warren, will recognize August seventh annually as Purple Heart Day, and urge the people and organizations of Warren to display the American flag, as well as other public expressions of recognition, recognition of our Purple Heart recipients.
So, with that being said, we need a motion to accept the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to sign the proclamation. I will second that.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? Yes.
Will you have any signs put up saying that we are a Purple Heart?
I'm asking, we're looking into that, I would like to get in my nineteen sixty-seven on Westbrook and on Palmer Side, to some of what some of the other communities have, we're working on it, Pat, Pat is leaving, so we're gonna have a new veterans agent working with us, so it might be a little while, but we do wanna have the signs for the town. And with that, we have a motion second, any other discussion? On the paper?
Aye.
Just for the thank you of the Pat, regarding his work on this, and putting this together for us, I greatly appreciate this.
Chairman?
Yes.
I think if you talk to Jimmy McKeon, he might possibly be able to make those signs.
Okay, we can do that possibly, then? Pat, Pat, Jimmy, see if we can? I've seen, I think I've seen where, has him, yeah, so I'm happy that we have the proclamation, and that Patrick had been able to go ahead and put this together for us, and we are still working on getting the light of the poll outside, so. Just want to copy that?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, right of entry, Mass DOD project, DOT project, excuse me, six-oh-six-six-eight-six, Route sixty-seven improvement, this is permission to enter town property, we need an approval, and I'll vote for the chair to sign this. So, this is part of the downtown project, West Warren.
They're resurfacing.
They're resurfacing, I'm sorry, thank you for correcting me back there. This parcel, this portion of land is in West Warren, right near the light on the side of the-
Veterans Park.
Veterans Park, yes. Right about-
Temporary easement, so they can-
Temporary easement.
I will make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, any discussion? Hearing them, on paper?
Aye.
All right. Thanks. David? Number nine, agreement between the Town and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to undertake the FY two thousand and fifteen CDFP, Community Development Fund Program, implementation of the Warren Domestic Violence Prevention Services Program. That is a grant-funded, it's a reoccurring grant for the domestic violence services, which is, is in where? which is, is in where? It's at the Valley Human Resources, I'm sorry, I have it down, Valley Human Resource Building. So we approved this as through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. It's a reoccurring grant, sixteen thousand dollars to pay for those services that are offered to the Town of Warren, which is, they're actually out of the building to where, near Maryland Hospital.
Need a motion to approve.
Yes, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you please sit back?
Yes, two original signatures.
More? That's number ten. Number ten. That's the next one. Number ten, the agreement between the town and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to undertake the FY two thousand fifteen DHCD, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development, the CDFP, which is the Community Development Fund Program, objectives established by approved application for the DHCD. This amount is two hundred eleven thousand dollars as part of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. It's another grant to fund things of, I guess, the scope of the work you're looking, we're partners with Brookfield, the, the oversight of the Senior Center of Planning Services for Brookfield, the oversight of domestic violence prevention, which is kind of tied into what we just signed also. The public's approval of the Highland Street area in Warren, engineering design for North Common Street and North Brookfield, and rehabilitation of approximately ten units of housing rehabilitation. So we're a part of this grant also. So we need a vote for approval for the chair to sign, correct?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. What's on the first page? Nothing? Okay. Just more stickers. Number eleven, State nine-one-one Department Supporting Incentive Grant Application for FY sixteen is an annual grant. It's for eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. It's for our enhanced nine-eleven telecommun, nine-one-one, excuse me, telecommunicated personnel cost. Basically covers the cost of personnel at dispatchers that operate the nine-one-one service within the building. Our chief has to apply for this annually, and when he comes in as a grant, it's a reoccurring grant, so it's just a vote and approval for the chair to sign.
Jim, I'll make a motion to approve and sign.
Second. Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Just those two spots, correct? It's the FY fourteen Housing, Community Housing Assistance Program. We're here to ratify that. It was notarized last night. I signed this document last night, so we're just here to ratify that in an open meeting. So I'll wait a motion, too.
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to give the amounts?
Yeah. The amounts, I'm sorry, seventeen thousand was Hardwick, thirty-five thousand dollars was Ware's portion of that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, seventeen thousand was Hardwick, thirty-five thousand was Ware. Do we have a motion, seconded?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Number thirteen was the Stand Foundation of Grant Application for the Canine Program. We decided to table that one this evening. I actually just received the document today at about one o'clock. I haven't had a chance to actually read it and go through the document. So I called the chief this afternoon and asked him if we could table it. It's, there's, there's, it's time sensitive, but it, it can wait a little while. We need to do a little more research and go through the document and, and bring it back up to the board after. So I asked the board if we could table this this evening because we haven't had a chance to review all the documentation. I mean, we did sign an agreement to participate, but I'm not prepared at this point to sign the documents until I have a chance to read everything.
If I may, I have some information on the program off the computer. There's more to this than meets the eye.
You willing to share that with me? Can I have a copy? Or can we make a copy after the meeting's end?
I will give you this copy.
Okay.
How much are you going to charge?
I'll make a copy.
I'll, I'll take it out of my, of my pocket. The interesting fact is, I asked the question, is this something nice to have? Do we really need it? Everybody, oh yeah, we need it, we need it. Ware has it, Palmer has it, Sturbridge has it. Why do we need it? With three towns within eight miles, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. Let me read the rest of the documents first before I, I, I just don't want the answer on, only reading a portion of the information. Let me finish reading everything else and we can have discussion on this.
I will give you this information.
Yeah.
And I have eight questions I have regarding this program. Want a copy for you, Jim? And if possible, I want a response here. Tell me what you're going to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess, I need that made copies for everybody. Do you want to, want to make copies of that?
Sure. But it's the deadline.
Oh. It's not for at least, I think, two more weeks. I don't know the exact date. It's, it's, it has a few weeks out before, so I have to submit the I.
Program's dates should be submitted by.
I think it's in the spring. I'm, I don't, I looked at, I just don't remember the exact date, but it's not like it's next week. We have some time. I know that the chief wants to get the application moving. I mean, when it comes to grant funded program like this, you know, the first one is usually the first one that's going to get read and seen and approved. So I know that, you know, our police department would probably like to get this facilitated and move forward.
I thought it's not competitive. And my question is, you know, whether the, you know, the board has really looked at what it's going, what it's going to cost the town after the three years.
I've looked at that briefly personally myself. I haven't investigated enough, and I want to also look at our, our officers that are on duty. You know, overtime and officers, you, you know, you add a canine, you're adding an officer. It's an officer.
Right.
You're tying up a vehicle too, Mr. Nardi.
There is a lot that is involved with it, so.
I just have a couple of questions.
You need to have more discussion, a little more.
You know, as far as after the three years are over, you know, the maintenance training, the food, the vet bills, I mean, that's all going to be.
It's going to become our cost. It's going to have to be built into the policeman's budget.
Does the grant cover the conversion of a cruiser for a canine?
Yes, it does. That twenty-five thousand dollars covers the conversion of the car, but you know, you have to look at this office, and now you're taking a car and converting it, and now losing a car potentially.
Correct.
So, and the cars are, the cars are all, the newer cars, newer vehicles are, but so when you convert something, now we're shorting us on another vehicle because that vehicle's going to be allocated for canines.
So is this a prelude to getting a new cruiser? And the other thing, I mean, you have to get a full approved vest. I mean, there's a lot of expense.
There's a lot.
I have a question. Everything I've read says we average about three to four canine calls a year, correct?
I think the number was fifteen over four years. I'm not.
Okay, let's just, let's, let's play big numbers. Let's play five a year. So basically, you've got a patrolman or a dog officer who'd be working over two hundred and twenty-five shifts in a given year and five, and we're saying five times in the, five, five times of that, we need the dog. So it seems like, I mean, going to what Stanley said, it seems like something nice to have, but we're not Boston where you would be using the dog every day.
No.
And where we have other communities close by that we couldn't borrow their dog if we, we needed it. I mean, we, we don't have money for a lot of basic things. We don't have money to keep streetlights on, to keep people safe, and to be able to see the walkway, but yet we can afford to have a canine dog that we might use five times a year? Does that make sense? To me, it doesn't.
Thank you. I believe it was Officer LaFlower came in during the meeting, and one of the things that was expressed was that's actually the number of times that they actually called for it. There are a number of times where one was necessary, but it wasn't worth the time to wait for one. There is a serious drug problem in this town. I don't know if anybody is aware of that, but if you want to ride ambulance with me sometime, we'll show you firsthand. The police can show you firsthand if you want to take a ride with them. That's available to you as well. Having this dog available to them is a very large deterrent. If people know that that's available, maybe they'll think twice about putting that stuff out on the streets for our kids to get to. Whether you feel it's a nicety or a necessity, I feel it's a necessity. Our kids are what is most important. Our community is what is most important. And to be able to get this, have it available to us at any time quickly, I feel is well worth the time and effort that we put into it.
So, one sec, just, one sec, hold that thought. Just to answer your question, I, I'm not looking to add to town government and, and to add to the police department's budget. I, I, you know, this is an officer. It would be considered an officer, and I think that, you know, personally, there's, there's room to, to do this possibly, but there's going to have to be a, a look at overtime and what we're paying police officers now because this animal will become part of the force. So how do we fit that in after year three into year four into the workforce and the labor portion of workforce? And how do we budget for that? So there's still some things to be worked out. Like I said, I have to read these documents. The board has to read documents before we, we move forward with it, but we do have time. It's, it's, you know, it, it does warrant more research at this point in time. So it's not like it's just going to be signed and sent off. We have to look at these things and, and read into it, so.
Is sharing a dog with another community something that's viable? Is that something that you've been doing?
It is, but the only problem we're going into is, you know, you, you call for an animal, another canine, and it's a thirty-five, forty minute to get it here. When, if you had the canine right here for a circumstance like what happened at the long mat, you know, it could be right there and available and, oh. Yes.
Will the dog be living in the town?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that it would live with Officer LaFlower.
He stays with the officer.
That he stays with the, with the officer.
Does, does Officer LaFlower live in the town?
About a hundred yards from the town line.
In Fizdale?
No.
Yeah.
From Phil.
Right over the town line, just before Tintas. I believe.
And, and.
Yes.
By Rogers Farm.
By Rogers, yes. Correct.
So Nancy, a question, there's no way to tell if Officer LaFlower has ever left this town in two years, or three years?
No, I mean, I asked if the dog was going to live in the town. I mean, we're talking about quick response for dogs, so my assumption would be that the dog would, I mean, be on duty, but then when he wasn't on duty, he'd be living in the town.
Yes, he does.
Close enough.
Right outside the outskirts of town. But I guess one of the questions I raised is, is let's say Officer Flower takes a job in another community, this is the, the animal go with him. And those are concerns I have too, because we spent money to train and, and, you know, the, the animal stays with the officer, so. There's a lot of concerns, a lot of things that we have to look at.
There's current, there's a lot of current litigation about dogs and people who leave forces and the dogs go with them. So there's three active cases right now going on about that.
Beverly?
Well, Mr. Gagner mentioned that we have a large drug problem in the town. Maybe the public should be aware of that as far as, you know, in the police reports. I mean.
Well, I, you know.
Maybe we should have something.
There's only so much information put out there, especially if it's a personal, you know, I don't know how we would share the information, but I, we do have problems, you know, like other communities. All communities have problems, you know, we have them too. It just depends on how you want to share that information. I mean, you know, realistically, you look and read the news and watch the news and the opioid crisis and, and the problems that we have, it's, it's in our town too. You know, I think Jim can speak to that in regards to, we're carrying our cat on the, on the ambulance now, and, you know, Adam was a champion for that, so, you know, there's a reason for it, unfortunately. So it's tabled. We're not signing anything this evening. It's open for further discussion. Thank you for the information and the kinds of concerns regarding that. So, number one, Treasury words?
The chairman, a motion to approve payroll warrant number sixty-nine in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars, eighty-four cents, and vendor warrant seventy-one in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents dated November twenty-third, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second that one. Motion's made, seconded. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I will make a motion that we approve warrant number seventy in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty cents dated eleven twenty-three, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
One of the section.